Coming to you straight from the Rio Grande and beyond and beyond broadcasting to the four corners of the globe. So grab your seat, your coffee, or your sundowner.
Okay, everybody, here we go.
On point as always. This is Gloves Off. Gloves Off.
So when I was working on Selena, the series for Netflix to play the role of Abraham Quintanilla, I put on a specific amount of weight, which I was fine doing, but also realizing it could be difficult to get that weight off. I got back into my physical regimen with James Leha, but I was still having trouble with just those last amounts. And that's when I got to meet Arturo from Laredo Medical Weight Loss Clinic. And just the products that he gave me kind of put me over the edge. I feel great about myself.
Back at you in Gloves Off, and today I have a great guest, a candidate that is running for Laredo City Council District Four. His name is Osvaldo Valde Guzman Jr. And we're going to touch base and see why he's running and which directions he can take the city. How are we doing today? You doing good?
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for having me on.
No, no, there's no problem. Anybody like I tell you. What's, I tell this to everybody. Congratulations on your parts for standing up and signing your name on that dotted line that you're going to go out there and represent people in the public position. It takes a lot of heart and it takes a lot of courage to do so, and people don't understand that. Win or lose, that's courage enough. Okay?
Thank you.
There's a lot, there's a lot of people that run for office in the past, not knowing what the office is. And right now, in this, the way things are now, we need to understand why you're running and what you're running for.
And I'll give you a little history of Paul. I did work in Laredo for 27 plus years. The last seven years I was Parks and Recreation Director. But I did start with Community Law Development as a Code Enforcement Inspector and then moved on to Rother State and then Convention Business Bureau as a Sports Marketing Manager, and then I ended up at Parks and Recreation. So I do have that, that experience of being with, so I have an idea how it works, how the budgets work, how the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plans work and stuff like that. I've had the experience of traveling to Washington also to, with, with the delegation, you know, to, to go ask for funding and stuff like that. So, and, and the reason I'm running is because, I mean, this is my city, this is our city, you know? And I do want to make a difference, you know? I do want to make a difference for the entire city.
Absolutely. And right now, the city, I'm going to divide the city into two things. I'm going to, when we talk about the city of Laredo, most people think that we're talking about the people, but we're actually talking about the municipality government of Laredo, Texas. And both Laredoans are great people, they're resilient people, they're people that are very opening to others.
Yes.
So that's the reason many of us move out of town and then come back later on because we want to raise our kids in that environment. That's why I did, right? And what I've seen, and I moved back here in 2000, what I've seen as time progressed to now, the city has become what I consider a dysfunctional government. And I hate to use, and people say, Paul, why are you being so harsh? And I go, we have a lot of great people working for the city, a lot of good people. But there seems to be a lack of communication from the directors to the city council, to the city manager, to the employees, and everything's all over the place. And it's kind of like, let's just shoot from the hip, do what you can. And if it's wrong, oh wow, you know, we'll, we'll get back up somewhere else. And there's some great departments, and I think right now we need people that can go in there and fix that. Because that has been lost, that was lost in the last administration, and it's progressively getting worse. It's not getting better. It's, and you're, and you see it and you're like, you know, what's going on? It's kind of like, and it's the same thing over and over. We got good people in there, but there's, I don't know. I don't know if you see that.
Yes, sir, I do. And like we were saying, we need to become one, you know? I retired from the city seven years ago, and I still get calls from employees, you know? Not only Parks and Recreation employees, but employees from, from other departments, you know? And asking me, hey, how can I do this? How can I do that? And I mean, I give them a little advice, advice, you know? But it's, it's, it's up to their directors, city managers offices, that. But also, Paul, I want to be the voice of the community. Hey, if there's something done, hey, I mean, I'm, I'm going to be, you know, I'm going to be there. Even though it's, it's not my district, and maybe other council members won't like that, but you know what? We, we, we got to fix it, you know? We, we need to, we, everybody needs to have a voice, you know? So, and, and again, I get, I get called, hey, well, I'm not getting this service, I'm not getting this service. It took me four hours to get, you know, and stuff like that. And we got to see where it's broken, you know, and, and, and try and fix it.
Absolutely. Let me tell you this, in my, in my perspective, a city council member is a representative of that district. And if, oh, with it, whether it's a small business, whether it's a resident, there's problems there that they can't go forward by calling a department, for sure, that council member should be reached out and it's not bugging that person. It's, there's a concern here, whether it's a speed bump, whether there's a hole in the middle of the road, the fire hydrants aren't working. We're getting, you are, you are the representative of that district. So whatever happens in that district, you have to voice it out. This is happening to this small business. This is happening to this building over here. Why is this going on? And when people are getting involved in stuff like that, other departments say, oh, that's not your representative. That's not the reason why you're doing that. That's your fear for all, your fear for the protection of us. And the protection of us, meaning the employees and the people inside the municipality. No, you're there for the direction to advocate that the citizens of that particular district in the city live well and in happiness. And things change, I'm seeing, it's, it's different, you know? People say, no, the city councilman cannot be micromanaging. Is that about micromanaging? It's because they're telling you this is going on in this district, what's happening? And what I've seen progressively in the, I would say less 10 years or so, this way, that has become more of a habit, is there's a department that's at fault. So they'll know that this, this, this council member is telling them, hey, this is wrong, this is wrong, this is wrong. They'll go and hound these other council members. I'm doing the good job, I'm doing the good job, I'm doing the good job. So they go in front of council and all of a sudden, they say, everything's taken care of. Oh yes, and six months later, the problem just became bigger problem. It's the same thing that could have taken one call or taken, sit down with an employee or sit down with a work staff or what have you, and have a nice conversation with everybody and plan it out. And it, it makes that problem escalate into a huge problem. And then all of a sudden, you know, it's that person that's in that business, he's disgruntled, he's doing this. Leave him, forget about it, just continue doing your business. So what I've seen is that a lot of these directors don't take care of the departments and the complaints are in the department, and they look at it in a different way. And I think that's what's gotten out of hand.
Yes, sir. And, and, and the city, the entire city of Laredo, and talking from the city manager's office to directors, they, they, I can't say this, they, they're, they're there to provide a service to the community, you know? If it's something small, hey, they didn't pick up my address, to something big, you know, they, my line's broke or whatever. They're, they're there to service the, the community, the public, you know? Especially council members, like you were saying, hey, yes, you're their boy, you know? They're the ones that elected you into office. So, I mean, they, they depend on you to get it done, you know? And hey, and if it's not getting done, I mean, it's broken, you know? Hey, and, and the, the, the top, the top guy is one that's responsible for it, you know, which is the city manager. You know, I mean, I mean, you, you, I mean, you gotta, you gotta hold everybody responsible for it.
Yeah. And, and, and that's what's happening, you know, and the complaints and, and say, a person does complain about something that occurs. It will be take, we'll, we'll change the subject in a minute, but say they complain about something that's occurred, and they complain to the department head, and then they, then they complain to the council, then they complain to the city manager, and nothing's done. It kind of, people have already lost faith.
Yes, sir.
And then, how can we win the faith back of Laredoans? That's what we need. We need people in there that are going to be doing the bid for the citizens of Laredo. That for sure.
And, and, and you're right, and, and I know it's not going to happen overnight, you know, it's going to be processed. But you gotta, you gotta get the faith back from the people, from the community, you know? And, and, and not only them, also from the, from the city employees, you know? I mean, those are the biggest assets for, for the city, you know, but you got to take care of them also, you know? But, I mean, it's not going to happen overnight, but we got to work in, you know, we got to work in it, and, and we need to provide a service.
How would you change that if you get elected?
You know, Paul, I mean, and, and, and they talk, we're talking about micromanagement. You know, I would really would love to sit down with employees, you know, to start off there and see what their problems are, you know? And for them not to be afraid of speaking out, you know? Recently, Paul, a couple of days ago, I got a call from one of the employees about boots, you know? Hey, I don't have any boots, and the morale is, is a little bit down, you know? We need to, I mean, we need to get back to, hey, we got to provide, I mean, employees, everybody with the, with the proper equipment, not tires and stuff like that. I mean, do, do some morale, but I would, the first thing I would do is, is talk to the, the city employees and see what's going on, you know? And, and eventually, I mean, I, I mean, I would love to, with the council that's going to be there, you know? And hey, I mean, this is, this is what it is, you know? We can't turn our eyes and, and go somewhere and forget about it, you know? We're there to provide service. I mean, council is there, they're elected, so they're there to serve their public.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, as a small business owner, and I know a lot of small business owners here, small businesses have been kind of left out.
Yes, sir.
And, and there needs more attention from the city towards the small businesses. It's a, but a small business is a backbone of our community, and it hasn't been that way. How would you change that?
You know, I, I would like to, to be with the small businesses because I've seen a lot of businesses that are, that are being closed, you know? But what, what is it? You know, what's the reason why they're being closed, you know? I mean, recently, I just went to them all, you see a lot of stores that are being closed, you know, I mean, around, around town. You see a lot of shops that are being closed. But why? I mean, why is it, you know, it's, we, we need to sit down and strategize what they need and what the city can provide.
Absolutely, absolutely. Of course, you know, 2020, the pandemic took, took place and, and a lot of things, you know, people cannot sustain. People were had still rent while it was closed, you know? And, and that right there was, I don't know what was the brilliance of that, but you know, they're the ones that killed off a lot of, a lot of the, the businesses. And they haven't come back. And you see a lot of businesses open up, and they don't last long, but they were trying to open up and it will take them, instead of a month or three months, both the planning, not planning and zoning, the building department, because of the inspections and everything else would pre, so prolonged so much that the person was already, so, how can I say? Had used most of the capital on, on empty, empty months that you were not open yet because of that. So when they do finally open, they can't sustain it that long. And you start, and you see that going on around town, you see that. And so there needs to be some type of correlation from the council that wants to make a forward, and the departments for them to also think in the same way, both building, building and planning and zoning, because I don't think they're, they're in correlation together.
And, and I know when I was there at, at the city hall, and I don't know if they still have it, they used to call it the, the one-stop shop, you know? That's where you have planning, you have building, you have everybody there. I don't know if that still exists or not, but I mean, we need to take a look at that, you know? And not delay, like you were saying, time is money, you know? A lot of people, this is their life scene, you know, and, and they're taking a risk, you know, to, to do something, you know? And we can't afford to lose them, you know? So, I mean, we're going to take a look at, I mean, at the, how it works, you know, how the system works.
Absolutely. Anything else you'd like to add on to how you'll change it and how you'll, you know what? Because for the people to understand who you are and what you're about?
Paul, I, I gave 27 plus years to the city. My dad worked for the city, he worked 34 plus years with the city, Public Works, 3rd Department, 3rd Department First and the 4th. So the city of Laredo, very dear to my heart, you know, not only, but family and stuff like that. My goal is to go back, and I still want to get to it. I retired seven years ago. And I'm still trying to sell my baseball mobile. So every time we go out to tournaments, I'm still trying to look at Laredo, or hey, one, it's over there in Laredo. I mean, it, it's still very important to me, not only for me, but for each other, you know? I don't know, I mean, there was a article this past Sunday about Laredo being the work that you start a career. Why is that? You know, why is that? Hey, we got to take a look at that, you know? I mean, you want, you want to mess up, hey, okay, if you want to, I'll sell Laredo, but back, you know, back, get back to the city of Laredo.
Here's something, when I moved back in 2000, Laredo was the second fastest growing city in the nation. To Las Vegas, and you see that with the construction of new, new neighborhoods that just boom. And then all of a sudden died, it just like collapsed, it disappeared, it was gone. And it's all right being the number one land port, beautiful. But how about everything else? Like you said, want to start a business, a career? What happens if your career, you know? Is, it needs for you to be, you're an entrepreneur, you're moving inside, you're, you're a professional by yourself, and, and it takes you, instead of 30 days to open up a new space, it takes you three months because of the lag time and the way the city is. Like I said, that's the reason why they're looking at that way. They're those studies, and Laredo comes out in a lot of different, we're not well, we might be in the top in some of the worst stuff that's going on, but, and people say, no, it's because you guys hate Laredo. No, this is us, we're not doing the, we have to understand what's going on. We can't just say, nothing is, you know, they sent me a video of the bridge. It's the, one, I think it's, not the, not the one downtown, the one over here on the Highway 35, Benito Juarez Lincoln Bridge.
Yes, sir.
And the guys are coming from Mexico, there's a line, and they're, they're coming to the United States on that bridge, and you can hear machine gun fire. And then not, not one machine gun, it's a lot of machine gun fire in the background. And then they cross the river, and then here they say, oh, they're, and some of our leaders say, nothing's happening here in Laredo. Well, we don't have a problem in Noble Laredo, everything's fine and dandy. Really? We have to wake up from that bubble, we have to understand what reality is. And yes, we love our neighbors, but just like we have neighbors that are good, and some neighbors that are bad, we have to understand what we have. And people say, no, you're going attacking Mexico. No, Mexico has to fix themselves. We can't rely on what they're doing. We have to rely on what Laredo is doing to better itself. The tourism in Mexico, they, they killed it by their, by themselves. We didn't kill the tourism, they killed it. So we have to rely on the tourism for what Laredo is, for what Laredo is. So we have to start building on those things. And, and if that's what we want to go, if we're going to go to a place that people are going to come here and buy, buy like they used to, but the malls, a third of it's closed, some of the stores are closing, and people look up, where is everybody going? They're bypassing us and going to San Antonio, bypassing us to go to Eagle Pass or go to the valley? What is going wrong? I mean, we've, we have to sit down with all levels and, and they have to, you know, say, you know what? What's, what's the problem? Where is the problem? Where, what's the nucleus of the problem? And fix it, because it seems that there's a lot of meetings, it seems that there's a lot of studies, it seems that there's a lot of things going on, and guess what? There's no progression.
Yes.
Okay?
Paul, I'm part of a World Linux Organization, and we, at one time, we were starting to get teams. I was running the because the town, everyone, they called Laredo's safe, Laredo's not safe. I set the checkpoint, but Mexico, one checkpoint, they thought this. But we started, we, all we worked in, and when they, when they got here, it was totally different experience that we had. And we made them, hey, this is Laredo, you know, Mexico has their, their, whatever it might be, but this is Laredo. And at one time, we, and the baseball tournament, we had a few teams, it was the largest baseball tournament in the United States, you know? But we got to change that mindset. Hey, look, this is Laredo. Yes, I mean, they're, like you were saying, they're part of the community, but we got to take care of our world.
Absolutely. You know, years ago, I did a seminar for, for an association, it was held in Reno, Nevada. And one of the other instructors and I were there, we, we had a lapse time. And we had the pass that were part of, how can I say? Were part of the the seminar that's there, part of the convention center that was there, we're walking around so we could walk in any other convention that was going on because we had that pass. So we had a convention, an invention was going on on robotics. This is back in 2003. 2003, 2000, yeah, 2003. And so we're walking, and I said, hey, let's go inside there. So we started walking, and they had all types of robotics, from manufacturing robots to, that's basically what they had, this and that. Now, cool, you had people from all over the world there. And then all of a sudden, on the corner, there's a booth. And it said, Macallan. And I talked to the people, and I go, you guys are Macallan? What are you guys doing here? Do you have any robots? Because no, we're, we're promoting the city of Macallan to the people here. If they want to do manufacturing jobs, everything else, and I go, I'm from Laredo. I have been to other conventions and other conventions, I have yet to see one booth anywhere, but I've seen Macallan all over the place. And that's the difference, you know? And I think that type of propaganda, advertising, word of mouth gets people involved, you know? When we start putting up a propaganda, I don't know who's a brilliant mind that put that propaganda, it was a big old billboard that said, Laredo is safe. In Dallas, and I don't know where else, who used to see it, used to see it up in Dun 35, you know? Laredo is safe. So what does that put a question mark in your head? You know, is it really, what's going on here? So I don't, you know, that's a negative thing if you look at it, but you know, I don't know who the brilliant individual was that did that, but I was like, wow, you know, okay. That's kind of negative, kind of like saying Coca-Cola doesn't, doesn't produce diabetes.
Yes, yes.
You know what I'm saying? It felt like that soft, you know what I'm saying? It's the same, you know, you know? Laredo's safe, you know?
But yeah, we, we, the city needs to see, and, and I worked at the Convention Business Bureau Hall. And the, we, I guess we need to see what conferences, you know? What, what expos are out there that are going to benefit Laredo, you know? We can't be going to all these big old conferences where Laredo is just a little tiny spot in the map, you know? Hey, I mean, little by little, you know, hey, let, let's, let's, let's go for regional meeting, you know, and state meeting and, and grow from that. And, and, I mean, and it's important that we have people in different organizations that are, that are on the board. That might be on the board of robotics or something like that. And, and I mean, and that's going to bring it down, you know, bring down whatever it might be.
Yeah, absolutely. And it's, it's incredible to see, we, like I said, we, there's a, there's a lot of great people here. And there's some great people working in the city of Laredo, but there's a lot, there's some that are, there's something that's not there. You know, and if you have bad apples, we have one bad apple, two bad apples in a, in a department, it's bringing everything down. Well, we have to get rid of them, you know? It's an old Chinese proverb that says, you want to save a hand, you have to cut off a finger, and
Yeah, you, I mean, you need to hold everybody responsible for their actions, you know? And hey, if we cut down the time from 30 hours waiting for, for a permit for something, to, I mean, to, I mean, 30 minutes or whatever, you know, and, and I, and I have an idea how it works. Okay, you might need something like that, but we can't delay stuff like that and drag it on three months, you know, two months or whatever, you know? I mean, time is money, it's money, especially for the small businesses, you know?
For everybody. Yeah, you're, you're correct. Anything else you'd like to say?
No, Paul, I mean, I'm, I'm, and again, I mean, I'm, I'm here to serve. Hopefully I get the opportunity and I'm here to serve. And, and if it doesn't happen, I'm, I'm still here to, to work with the city, for, for the city, you know? And I still tell people, hey, I mean, whatever you need from me, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm here to, I'm here to work and help.
Absolutely. And if somebody wants to get with you for your campaign or likes what they hear and says, you know what? I want to help out Mr. Guzman, how can they get ahold of you?
Uh, they can go onto Facebook, the, the Facebook page is up, or then you can call my son, I have an old phone, who's giving my, my cell number, and it's 9563378411. They're more than welcome, if they have any, any, any questions, concerns or whatever, I mean, I mean, I'm always available.
Absolutely. I want to thank you for your time and wish you well in, in the campaign. And for those, the most of you all watching out there, you all stay safe, be safe, and God bless you guys. So next time, much peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Oh, if I can leave on one note, Paul? So the word right, right is an entitlement. If you look up the word right, and you look up a legal definition of the word right, it's going to come up and it's going to tell you it's an entitlement. So these are your entitlements by law, these are your fundamental rights and entitlements. So just because you say, I have a right to free speech, I have a right to bear arms, I have the right to assemble, I have the right to my child, at school, his education, I have those rights, just think of them as entitlements. Those are your entitlements by law.
Absolutely. And what I'm talking about
Back and read your orders, go 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 back and read your orders. And the reason I keep emphasizing that is because a lot of parents, you have your court orders and you say, you're the non-custodial parent, and you never have read your court orders, you don't know what your rights are, you don't know what your duties are. So if you're going to go up there and you're going to fight for your child, make sure that you're on the same, you've leveled the playing field, that way everybody knows what the rules are, you know what the rules are, and you're just not bumping your gums and, and you're sounding different, right? So make sure you read your court order, if you don't understand, reach out to Paul Ri. So make sure you read your court order. If you don't understand, reach out to Paul or I. We'll try to help you navigate that water, that piece of water and we'll go from there.
Till next time, you guys stay safe, be safe and God bless you guys.
Later. Thanks for having me.